I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion. Who wants to be first?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Richard.
Richard Miller, our Plum Creek section fifteen, got that road that's been closed for twenty plus years. I'd like to put a bridge to get across from one side to the other with my four wheeler. It hasn't seen a piece of county machinery for twenty plus years. I just want, gonna ask board here and then I'll go down and ask at the engineer's office, but I'd like to be able to come back to you guys to see why not, why I couldn't.
Doug standing right there. Richard wants to put a bridge across the road that we
Close.
Close, so he can get across with his four wheeler.
Right to the north of your, um, if I remember correctly, there was letters sent out to landowners when we had some
Yes.
No, I'm a personal bridge.
On your own property?
No, um, you guys' road bed is a lot higher, so it wouldn't take as much part.
Would, would all the adjacent landowners be willing to vacate the road? That'd be a lot easier, then it'd all be yours.
Greg Albert would vacate from his last lane to the bridge. The road's been closed for twenty plus years.
If we could, if we could vacate the road, then it'd all be yours and then you
Well, they won't
Can do whatever you want.
Greg won't vacate from the, from the intersection north down to his last lane. He's gotta have access to his property.
But he doesn't have access from the east west road, south there? I don't, I
Not on the north side of that bridge.
You want, you wanna look it up and see what we can vacate?
Plum Creek, Dick?
Plum Creek, fifteen.
Is that one sixty-fifth Ave?
Correct.
Okay, I was looking it up on my phone here.
Greg Albert's got access from the, um, one hundred sixtieth Ave.
Not to the north side of his farm. He's got land on the north side of that bridge.
Yeah, no, he probably wouldn't.
Well, I mean
From the area, he wouldn't.
He would be able, wouldn't he be able to use the same bridge you're talking about?
Not with a tractor. Yeah, he's got a food body to back in there.
In order, it's a, if it's a public road, it's gotta be built to public standards.
But it's a closed road. It's not used.
Yeah, I probably can't, is that other one not working?
It's been closed.
Well, if we could vacate, now we'd do the fast way.
Yep.
Vacate, it's not gonna be much of an option though, when you have a landowner that has to get access to his property.
There's access to the property?
There's no access to his property from one sixtieth.
Or the north side of that bridge used to be Greg's got a driveway that goes in
I, I understand there's that. There's, I, I don't know if you're talking about before or after this happening, but the fact of the matter is, right now, it's a public road. So, in order for anything to happen on a public road, it's gotta be done to a public stand.
According to
To standards. Now, if it was vacated, then all the rights for roads are no longer with the public. And there are ways that easements can be created, so people can drive over other people's property. There, there are ways that things can happen. But access, because a person does not have a bridge to cross on their own personal property, doesn't mean they do not have access. They still have rights. They can do whatever they want over that creek. That, that's not a meandered stream. It's not navigable.
Doug, um, can you explain the history of this? Like, if it's still a public road, why is it closed?
Well, that's what I was getting at when I first started visiting. Um, at one time, when bridge funds were limited in the nineties, uh, the secondary road department did send letters out to those landowners and if I, if my memory is correct, Dick wrote back and said that that bridge was only used by one person and it would be foolish for the taxpayers to, uh, put a bridge in, in that spot. So
So why didn't we?
The road department chose not to rebuild that bridge at that time. Uh, shortly after that, year, years or whatever, uh, the bridge failed when a concrete truck drove over it. Uh, it was overloaded. And it's been that way. We had to take the bridge out, obviously, when the bridge was faked.
Doug's memory is not quite accurate.
I think I have the letter. I could certainly go and get it.
We said that the bridge was adequate at that time.
Okay.
You could cross it with a tandem truck loaded with grain.
Okay.
Once it failed and they decided to take it out, there was a lot of farmers that came. The preeds used tandem trucks. And now everything's gone insane. But at the time, we said the bridge was adequate. It was serving the purpose. Once they took the bridge out, we have no bridge. There was more. We had meetings in here after that. The Maudsley's were in here, the Preeds were in here and other people were in here saying, yes, we could use a bridge there. It still goes from that site to this site. But if, if they're not gonna use the road, I, I would like to be able to put a bridge to get across it. Three miles around every time I wanna go to my, my property is, uh, it's no, not, it shouldn't be when the, that structure of the road still sits there. And Greg Albert will not vacate because he wants access to his property.
Um, do, do you know how big of a stream that is? Does it need a bridge or a small box culvert good enough or?
A half mile south, we built a bridge and I think it was, um, it, it, it was a bridge. If you go, uh, mile to the east, there's a bridge, uh, box culvert, any kind of culvert, I would not. I do not believe, hydraulically speaking, that it would work.
All right. We can't do nothing.
I don't know that we can do anything right now, but any other thoughts or questions from the board?
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. KC.
Matt's gonna go first.
Okay, Matt?
Two weeks ago, when we were at the meeting, um, there was some discussion. Jack, uh, gave a couple comments about, uh, majority of the people here, uh, needed to trust the supervisors up there. Was process being done and work behind the scenes being done for the people of county. And, uh, there was two pipeline representatives here and as they were walking out, one of them gives a thumbs up to the board and there were some gestures from board members back to that. How do you explain to the public that you guys are on the, on their side and not in cahoots with two pipeline members or representatives that don't even live in this county or pay taxes in this county? It kinda, I mean, I guess I'm here quite a bit and I don't give you a thumbs up or a high five when I walk out. Um, it just seems a little odd. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I saw it too and didn't know what that meant. You did it twice.
I do not see it. I, you said there was some board members that gestured back to him?
I know one.
Gestureed out.
Doug said, thanks for coming. I got you back. I'm on your side. I'm at it. I know another person up there waving because they didn't know what they're doing. I talked to that person. I know that complete accent, but the other one, all I seen was a head nod.
Of course.
And I seen the guy walk in. I seen him do something with his elbow and I was kinda like, didn't know what you're doing. And then Matt told me that he gave a thumbs up, watched the tape, but I seen a certain board member up there nod his head. Which, and it's the pipeline navigator, which is in the northern corner, was the guy that gave the thumbs up. Because, uh, some, Matt has spoke, there's only one person here from navigator. It was some that was not here last two weeks ago.
Well, I will just reiterate that we, you know, we are working. Can't go into details because it's with our attorney and, uh, we, we are doing things that, you know, we get, last week, we signed on to the, uh,
To that motion?
To the motion to dismiss because of, uh, the language and the, and if that would ever pass, then that, that would change things drastically. Uh, in on that, um, and we are doing, working on some other things, but, uh, we, we are, we are doing things for the landowners, but we just can't go into detail.
I'm not done with what he had said in that meeting, uh, two weeks ago, Jack, but it just looks a little suspicious.
Well, yeah, if somebody, if somebody
To the public when that's going on.
Yeah, if somebody's gesturing from this board to, yeah, that's, that is inappropriate. I will say that. I, I guess I can see it, but, uh, when it happened, yeah, that is inappropriate, but, uh, I can't excuse it.
Well, since I'm the one being talked about here, I'll address it. Um, I was asked after the meeting if I noticed the thumbs up. No, I didn't. I said, nodded as, as people were walking out. Um, common courtesy. Beyond that, had no meaning to me, so whatever thumbs up anyone does, inadvertent, don't really pay attention to it. Simple as that.
I mean, to be fair, we said thank you and waved to a lot of people that walked out of boardrooms.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if that's
I don't, I didn't see any of it.
Most of the people that come here, come to go to county, I guess that's where I see the difference. I just wanted to bring the attention, because it looked, uh, very, uh,
Lots of very controversial subject.
But when one of you was always bucking us and that's the one that does the nod and it just looks
I also made the motion at that point in time, so I guess my actions, I feel, should speak louder.
You, you have the right to do it. You want, I just, I just, I asked a board member and they said, come to the public discussion, bring it up and you'll get your answers. And that's why I came. I'm not here to pick on you or throw stones at you.
You might not be, but
You answered the question and that's okay.
Whatever your marketing's all.
Everyone has
Remember the contact meeting we had two weeks ago? Roger said you should watch what you do. Apparently that one and the one here are right on together.
No, I think it's unfair that you make a comment that you
I wasn't saying your name.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can move on from public discussion.
We're not gonna go any further on this because it's just combative. Mr. Brian, you've got something for open discussion?
No, I don't.
I still have a little more question.
I'm here for the service.
Okay, go ahead, Casey.
Mr. Wacker, two weeks ago at the contact meeting, so I can apologize to this person. You said that I was kinda loud and I startled a little lady, which I knew all the ladies that were here. I'd like a name so I could call her and apologize if I did so.
I will let you know outside. If you wanna contact me, I'll let you know outside. She did, she requested not to have her name brought up in the meeting, so.
Would you step outside, you two, and do that right now?
Yeah, yeah.
So that we get it over with in public discussion?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Uh, road foreman. Got anything that's interesting?
Blowing the waves. Got some rains or some blading roads.
I went over the Big Six Bridge this morning, you know, it's a lot better.
Yeah.
It's nice.
They did, they did good job. Did the shoulder work all at once and stuff, so they should be up to the bar. Put that, so, go back through the weeds that are one side.
You doing a four way bridge now yet or?
Yeah.
Supposed to be set for this morning.
Plum Creek Road, they're gonna fix that?
That's, um, they did that yesterday.
They did?
That's, that's
Good.
I don't know, my hand blacked out. They also repaired that for
That's done too?
They did that one yesterday also.
What else have they got?
Perdido Bridge yet after that and
Nick Rams.
Yeah. And they'll, uh,
Spot north of Woodmore, um, there is a box culvert south of Tyke that, uh, was replaced last, or a bridge that was replaced with a box culvert.
That's right.
Um, I think those are the highest priorities that we have right now.
They started on the bridge yet, south of Tyke?
It has, yes.
Yeah.
See Doug and Chairman, Chairman twelve? Um, right back, right, when you get right west of Dave Rivers place, you guys fix that culvert?
Yes.
It's, uh, it's, a car and truck, you really don't fill it, but a tractor, it really throws you. Just to give you a heads up if they're doing some flat topping. It'd be on the south side of the road.
I wanted to say something back there. I can't see him. You can see him?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything, anything else?
I haven't been north to Saxon the last couple days and there's a spot in the road there.
Yeah, I went a bucket of rock and yesterday we're in process of, okay, we're gonna get repaired.
Sounds good.
Anything else for the foreman?
Added one thing, um, out in kind of the Meadow Ridge area, um, I had someone kinda talk to me about, I believe it's at the end of one hundred ninetieth street where it kinda hangs right there at, at Rich Deal's property. Um, just kinda off that road, they said that there were some rocks that were brought in to kind of even out that area. They said it's a bit more washed out. He went out and cleaned out some of the weeds and stuff that were out there and can see that it's a bit more washed out. I don't know if that would be a secondary roads thing or if that's gonna be something that's gonna be more towards like a drainage district thing.
I, we'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause that road only goes one ninetieth, only goes so far east.
Right, right.
So
And it's right about in the area where Rich Deal's property is.
Right, so it may not, it may not be the road and I do not believe that that's a drainage district.
Okay.
I can certainly take a look at it.
Okay.
Nothing else? Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming in.
Doug, I do have a question for you quick.
Sure.
On the claims, I had seen something with renting trucks and excavators from Reddings.
Pardon me?
On our claims, I had seen something of renting trucks and excavators from
Correct.
Was that?
Excavator.
Okay, it said ex, truck and excavator.
Well, there's a truck to haul it.
Okay, was that for a specific project or what was that for?
We, up at the Four Corners.
Okay.
Uh, there was quite a bit of fill that we used that on and then also we had, south of Lone Rock, we had a large culvert, a deep culvert that our own equipment would not, uh, would not work on, so we rented equipment for what it was for that.
I seen it out there and asked the same thing. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Um, doesn't necessarily tie in with the agenda minutes completely, but for the claims and setting the appointments and salaries last night, I realize we don't have resolution for appropriating money on this agenda or, and I don't think we did it before the fiscal year ended. Do we have to do that before we pay bills and set salaries?
No, we have the real minutes.
Yeah. We've always done it before the end of June. For the new fiscal year.
We had an appropriation that we did in June.
Was it earlier in June?
Uh, yeah, I can hold up reservations.
I was excited to work with, to, to pay warrants, which, which is, pay the bills and that's what
No, that's the draw warrants and interfund transfers is on there. Um,
Yeah.
We've got interfund, right, draw warrants.
So
Cause I, I didn't think we had done that last night when it clicked in my head and then I looked back at the last couple agendas, I didn't see it.
Um,
Just wanna make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is before we do that.
Yeah, um, let me look. Let me go. We can do that agenda minutes, well, first.
Should we move them to the bottom and then if we have a break or something, we can double check on that or?
Well, I gotta leave right now, but, um, we can do the
We can do the minutes here.
And the
Yeah, the agenda minutes is fine, it's, but it's the claims and the appointments and salaries that I don't think we can do.
I think we can, cause I, but why don't we do the agenda minutes and then I can go check.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to do the regular minutes and the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Stacker, second by Josh, or Carter?
Either one.
Okay, Carter. Any discussion on the June twenty-seventh minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Then we have minutes for the June twenty-eighth meeting. Is there any discussion on that? And a motion to approve the minutes for the June twenty
Please do them all together.
You want them all together?
Yeah.
Okay. So that motion passed. Discussion to review and approve claims.
Let me click and see if there's
Yep. Take a minute and look at your claim. You haven't done so far.
All your stamps have done. There's your page just supposed to be.
It's got one.
Right there. You got it, Carter. This is just the one place for us to sign these, and you're up, right?
Yeah.
Did planning and zoning have another meeting or, or something else? Or, or there's expenses or, or paper? I was gonna ask that. There's this variance for requests.
Planning and zoning probably had a meeting.
Could be board adjustment if there's a variance.
Although that'd probably be under that, wouldn't it be?
Yeah. I mean, it'd still be under planning and zoning budget, but, um, it'd be board adjustment.
Oh, okay.
For a variance, I believe.
Yeah.
Do you want me to call Doug and ask or?
No.
I think it's just normal operating procedures, Carter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't, I missed something.
Yep. It was, it was like
So we can actually look. I know a lot about it.
Yeah, it was late last night. I was gonna try and mention it before the meeting, then we had the big picture, so skipped my mind at that point, but I
Usually we do that in June, I thought.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be done in June before the fiscal year starts. That's why I was concerned about if we pay bills without that
Approval to draw on the warrants?
No, it's, um, it's the, um, appropriations.
Well, we usually approve that earlier.
I'll, I'll show you from twenty-two.
To, uh,
June. Yeah, appropriation resolution and then Jack, do you wanna come look at this? I'll have it up on the computer here in a second.
Maybe.
Roger. This appropriations, this is last year's, but it's just totaled out. Appropriation solution. Need, this was last year, but I don't, I don't think we have that done. But it would have been June twenty-eighth of last year. And then it's broken down into categories and
Yep.
All that. Next one's eight, eight, so. Page seventeen through nineteen of the packet, if you're looking that way, Josh.
We haven't done it yet. We're gonna have to do it today, but it's only gonna be done in a month. We gotta pay bills.
I don't think we can.
We can call for an emergency agenda item payment.
Yes.
But we don't have the resolution prepared.
Well, we can write a resolution up.
If we have to wait and do that at the end of the meeting, that's fine, but
Well, we can allocate the resolution.
She's leaving.
We're not gonna run a whole, another week without doing
Right.
Without paying the bills that we got in front of us in the claims.
Do we wanna do the hospital update quickly? That's just discussion. Do you guys wanna go ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna go ahead?
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm the first. Um, I'll share what I know from my, uh, first three days back. Um, so, uh, through May, we had an operating margin of a two point five five percent. Um, so we're in a statewide group with, um, all of the Um, so we're in a statewide group with um all of the mercy owned or affiliated like us. Ha uh ha hospitals. Um, and of those, we are one of six uh that still is showing a positive operating mar uh. Margin throughout the year. The average for all of the rest of the hospitals is about a negative four percent. Um, so we're doing really well and this is really just. You know, due to the great group of doctors that that we um have and really. Everything that that they um take on. Um, in, in May, we had a really high ER volumes that. That's what kinda, kinda drove our revenue um for that month. Uh, doing well on staffing, uh looking for a few put. Situations on, on our um third floor as well as a fit, physical therapy. A assistant and a lab tech for the. We, for the we, weekends. We did on a, a, across the board increase here in uh July. Staffing really continues to, to remain competitive, to remain competitive. And uh that supplements the market increase that we do every Jan- uh. January. Um, of, of, of those twenty six hospitals that uh that we are a part of through May, we do have the. Lowest turnover ra- ra- ratio of uh of them all at a seven percent. On the a- average is around nineteen per uh percent. And I, I can't remember the exact a- amount, but I think the na- the na- nationwide average is around. Seven, seventy to eighty, eighty percent, so doing really well there. Um, our durable medical equipment store is expected to open sometime in August. Uh, just had a slight delay just to, just to get a new employee brought on and trained. Um, so the, so, so the, this will be on the first floor um on the, on the uh hospital side. And then uh our uh senior life solutions program is uh scheduled to begin um at the end of, of, of the month. Um, I, I, I think we talked about that here before, but that will be a great s- service to our uh seniors. Who um just have uh. Maybe some depression or anxiety to have a space a few times a week to go, to go to. And um get group in individual therapy. That, 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 that's all I have, any questions?
Well, the minute you come back, debt service coverage just popped right back.
Pop right back up, just have to show up.
How do you explain that?
No, luckily, everything went well and, you know, I, 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 I come back and we're doing better than e- e- ever, so. Everyone does a good job.
I was kinda surprised to see labor compensation dropped under fifty five percent again.
Yeah, you, you know, it really is kinda, kinda just the timing too of when we do pay of uh, of. When we do pay uh payroll too, but that will jump again here in uh July, once we pay out that increase.
How's the new little one doing?
Good, she's good, she's uh three months old and I feel like the second one just knows that they have to be good and not make a big, big, big. Ju- ju- just because of the big one has a lot to say in her and, and her life has not changed one bit, so. It's going good, good though.
Good. Any other questions?
Is there gonna be something that makes us any kind of want to do some surgeries until you find a new surgeon or?
So at the moment, we're actively looking for a new surgeon, however, Dr. Candolian um is still gonna stay on staff here at City Regional. And still intends to continue to do exactly what he's been doing. Um, at some point, he intends to move to Des Moines, um and he would just commute back and forth, so.
Good, okay.
But looking at, you know, the future.
How's your position going?
Navigating, figuring out new waters, so it's all good.
Really? Haven't had any frustration yet or anything?
No, I can't say there's been any frustration, just trying to figure out really what my purpose is, so. And try and give up some of my old, old job duties, that's really harder than one thinks, so.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, back to me, no, it was not approved um in June, there was an appropriation, but it was for that thousand dollars or whatever, it was not a big appropriation, so thank you for catching that. So um, that's my fault, I apologize, um we should have done that in June, it was not on there, so um. We will have to do that before we can approve claims, so I can done that, I can get that done quickly and put together, that's not a big deal, but we'll need to come in sometime this week to do that, so we can get our claims paid, so. Are you guys okay with that?
Well, we can have an emergency resolution put in place so that we can keep acting, I don't see any reason why we can't.
Well, we can, if you wanna meet tomorrow afternoon, we can get it and a job is set up and posted. Or anytime soon, as long as it's this week.
I'm, I'm working and I'll go in it tomorrow, so that's fine, it's me.
Okay, like, what about you, Josh?
That's fine.
Um, Jack, tomorrow afternoon, right?
Morning would be better.
Okay, we just have to get it posted, so what about if we do like eleven o'clock, we can try to get my job put together and post it and. Do the eleven o'clock, does, does that work for you, Roger?
I'll make it work.
Yeah.
It'll make it work, uh.
Okay.
Can we hold the claims till then?
Yes, let's do that, and then we'll do both at eleven tomorrow. Thank you.
That the claims and the appointments and salaries. And the resolution.
Do you wanna move the appointments and salaries to them too, or do you wanna do?
I think we should approve that after we have money available.
Okay.
Well, but don't draw on the warrants and internal funds and everything's gonna have to be delayed then?
No, cause that's, that's, that's authorization to go through the processes, so that, I think that's okay. But I don't think we should make appointments and salaries till we have money available. For a process. Then.
We're up to Microsoft.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're up to Derek and he's on my.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you perfectly.
Morning Derek.
Morning.
Uh excellent, excellent, good morning. I've got uh three items on for today. Um, two are discussion and then one is uh actually I, I need a resolution to uh sign the contract. First one up is Microsoft Office annual licenses. Um, this is for Word, Excel, Outlook, um Access, all those applications that all of our departments use. We have one um contract that we purchase off of, when you look at the claim, um towards the bottom, you see the breakdown. We had a little less than two thousand dollar increase this year due to the EMS folks being added. Um, so that's pretty, pretty much the same as every year. Any questions on that one?
Doesn't look like anything.
I'll just.
Okay, excellent.
Entertained a motion to approve the annual Microsoft Office licenses.
Subtle.
Second, Carter? Josh made a motion, Carter's second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried unanimously. Your next one is the locator license fee.
Yeah, so document locator and the solutions licenses go hand in hand. Um, the document locator license is just about flat there. Um, the solutions license is up a couple thousand. Um, so we've got about fifty four thousand between those two programs. Those are the applications that all of our departments use day in and day out to their business. So auditor, treasurer, recorder, assessor, all of those departments use those applications every day to um provide county business. Um, a few years ago, we did look at moving vendors to another competitor, uh but the, the uh input from staff would be, would be a major um change. There's also discussion of that product being less reliable and last time we checked, it was twenty, twenty-five percent more expensive, so. Significant increase in cost, um for not much value there, so. And again, that's just an annual expense, I do need a signed um contract for them, which Tammy should have a copy of um for the solutions license agreement, so we do need a signature on that one.
I would entertain a motion to approve. Jack?
I'll second.
Kyle? I have a motion by Jack, second by Kyle to approve the locator license fees, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously. The next one is your annual license code support agreement.
For solutions, and he already touched on that with the being together. Since they're hand in hand. Is there anything further you had to say on solutions?
Uh, Derek? No, it's just, it's a separate claim, so it's a separate invoice for forty four thousand. But the, the signature is for the solutions portion of it, not the document locator portion, if that matters.
Okay.
Well, we have it on the agenda to vote on, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yep.
Kyle?
Yep.
You have a second, Josh?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously.
Anything else for me, gentlemen, before I drop off? Enjoy your vacation.
Don't believe so, thanks.
Oh, awesome, thanks guys.
Thank you.
See you next week.
On your folder, you see cash on hand for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for the auditor, recorder, sheriff and treasurer. Everybody had a chance to look at it? Any questions? Motion by Jack, second by Carter to approve, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously. Two.
No.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, perfect, good morning.
Morning. So as you see, we're on the agenda this morning to approval of a official hiring of a new deputy sheriff, this is the position that. Uh, we advertised starting back in March, went through the process. Uh, just to give you an update, we had eight applicants, one did not show up on the day of testing, so we were down to seven. Uh, of those seven, four did not meet the requirements on the civil service testing. Three failed the written exam and one failed the physical exam. So that left us with three applicants, um we went through the interview process, the background checks, we've completed everything, um I actually did three interviews of the candidates. The one I include the spouse, because I want them to know what they're looking forward to here on the work rotation and make sure their spouses are on board. And we have uh are ready to offer a position to a gentleman from Bancroft by the name of Wesley Gibbs. Uh Wesley was one of the three candidates that made it through the testing. And we'd like to start him on August first. So I need your blessing and approval to uh go ahead and make that official.
What's his name?
Wesley, W E S L E Y, Gibbs, G I B B S.
I'd make motion to approve hiring him.
I'll second.
Second by Carter?
I actually know him before.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Didn't know he was interested in being a sheriff, though.
He approached me about a year ago, wanted to know uh if we ever took out applications, so, so yeah, he's been very interested, he's, he's uh. Just to give you a little background on Wesley, he's been in the area for about fourteen years, he's been a school teacher at North Union School District for about the last ten or eleven, I believe. Uh, he's married to a local Bancroft gal, they've got five children living Bancroft, um ex-military and five years of service. Um, he's got some really good technology experience, he's actually does that part of the teaching up at the school. Uh, so we're, we're excited to bring him on board and I think he's excited to start a new career, so. We'll get him going here on August first, he'll go through the training, we've already got him enrolled in the academy, which will start January first, or excuse me, first week of January. Um, is when he'll leave for the academy. Update on Caleb Hill, Caleb is down at the academy right now, um he's due to graduate on August eighteenth. Um, Caleb's doing really well, he's top of the class academically, which I'm pretty proud of, and he's also one of the top shooters down there for the firearms qualification. So Caleb's doing really well and uh sounds like he's having a real good experience at the academy. Um, update on patrol vehicles, fourteen months it took to get our patrol vehicles, we finally went and picked them up on Friday. So I'll probably be putting on the agenda within the next month or two to get, start ordering for two more, cause it's probably gonna take another year to get them. So we'll start the process uh to get going for this coming fiscal years of patrol vehicles. Other than that, any other questions? We survived the debate for a little incident, so that went well, and. Otherwise, we're getting ready for the fair now.
Perfect.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
See ya.
We didn't vote.
Oh, yeah, we gotta vote. I had a motion and a second on the floor, everybody remember the motion? All those in favor's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, thank you. Too much discussion. We are up to approve resolution number seven eleven twenty three oh one to draw warrants. I would entertain a motion to that effect. Jack?
No, second.
Kyle? Everybody understand the motion? Do a roll call vote, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Yeah, thank you. We are up to resolution number seven eleven twenty three oh two, internal fund transfers. I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution. Carter?
Jack's the. Jack is the.
Oh, Jack, good.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for resolution seven eleven twenty three oh two for an internal fund transfers, everybody understand the motion? Everybody understand the motion? Seeing no discussion, I would entertain. We do a roll call vote.
Pla?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Sacker?
Yes.
Jax? And our next agenda item will be on.
Tomorrow.
For tomorrow. We are up to approve the appropriate funding for FY twenty-three twenty-four for homestead credit, military exemption, elderly, and disability credit. Next, you got any discussion on that? Or should say Judy. Jack moves to approve. Do I have a second?
Kyle?
Do a roll call vote?
Pla?
Yes.
Nash?
Yep.
Walter?
Yes.
Sacker?
Yes.
Jax?
Motion carried unanimous. Yes.
Okay, sorry, missed it.
Next, we are up to acknowledge the profited funding for ag land and family farm. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make motion to approve.
Kyle, somebody like to second?
I'll second.
Josh, any discussion?
Could you explain this to me, just for clarification?
Sure. Oh, we got.
Judy.
We got Judy sitting there. Ag land and family farm. Credit.
Okay, so the ag land credit automatically goes to any property that are over ten acres or more. If there's continuous land, that goes into account. But the auditor's office actually is the one that goes through and approves them all. We take the applications for family farm, and to qualify for family farm, a family member has to farm the land or any, or relative to it. It goes all the way down to, but it excludes cousins. So, but they have to apply for that one. So they, that deadline is November first. And that also has to be ten acres.
So that's.
So it's a reduction?
But it is grandsons.
Yeah, grandsons and.
Sons.
Nephews, nephews, whatever. It goes all the way down to, but it does not exclude cousins. And like if it's an LLC, the shareholders, if they're not related, one shareholder has to have more than fifty percent in order to qualify.
Okay. My only question is, why does it have such a fine point? Why does it have such a decimal point there?
Behind the percentage.
Yeah, yeah.
And that part, I, we don't work with that part of it.
Yeah.
We just take the applications in our office and give it to the auditor's office, so. Yeah.
Yeah, that that number comes from the state, so we don't, we don't.
Comes from the Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue, yeah.
It's something that got passed through both houses in Des Moines, and then they, they put a number on it and, you know.
Yeah, we approve it, but it's above our pay grade.
Any questions? Other than that, I would ask you to do a roll call vote.
Pla?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Sacker?
Yes.
Jax?
Yes. Everybody had a chance?
Actually, they probably, they probably have the percentage, because the total is just a few cents under ten million. So that's probably their dollar limit cap to it at the state level, so then they break it out by all the counties that way. Because they're only forty-six.
Do is ten million?
Yeah, they're forty-six cents short, so that's why the decimal point's so fine to get it as close as possible without going over.
Josh, do you wanna call Donna, exception five hundred?
I've got it.
Yep. You should come in over.
Do you, are you coming over for the handbook? Okay, perfect, sounds good, thanks.
I know Doug had some.
Why don't you punch Doug in? Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
He is one of one.
Yeah.
Hey Doug, we're up to the handbook next. Are you, if you're coming up for that, and then yours. Yep, bye.
Doug, have a seat.
Have a seat?
Yeah, have a seat. We are up to the handbook. I know you made some changes.
Well, we've been working on it for a while, and I guess I thought this might be a good opportunity to discuss where we're at, and then I think we have a department head meeting on Thursday.
Right.
So we can keep on knocking this out.
We do need to have part of it approved before the payroll for the sheriff's office changes. So there are parts of it that we need to get approved. So.
So where?
Because the sheriff's office did not approve their union, so they no longer have a union contract. Some of the things that were outlined in their union contract is not listed in the handbook. So those things have to be added to the handbook in order for them to be able to use those.
So the changes that were outlined on the iPad, we should just approve the sheriff's division of that?
Well, or, I don't know how you wanna do that, Doug.
I, I'm at your page twelve. If you look under work period and overtime for jailers slash sheriff, I hope it's on page twelve, but you're page twelve, because sometimes when you start working on things, it starts getting a little on.
Yeah, it is page twelve for me.
So that was input, we had a discussion with Roger, Lori, Bailey, Melissa, Tammy, and myself for that.
So are you asking for approval for just that section?
That's all we can do.
For payroll, I mean, because their payroll will be coming around on the twentieth.
Yeah. Because I was, I was trying to read through and follow all the stuff that there's with the questions and the comments and all that stuff, I didn't know if this was.
That's all on page twelve, huh?
Yes, yeah.
So what else is on page twelve? Or we can just approve the sheriff's?
I would.
There's the work period and overtime for EMS goes on to the bottom of page eleven. Is that something that needs to be done before their payroll too, I'm guessing, or not?
Well, you guys did a payroll policy for them, correct?
Yeah, we did.
There, there is a staffing policy, yeah.
Staffing policy, yeah.
Staffing policy.
And that's not changing.
Right.
So I think they're fine.
Yeah, that's a twenty-eight day cycle, and it's.
The only thing that really, really is.
Is the jailers.
Is the jailers and the sheriff's part.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's other stuff in the document that was changed, but if we just approve that section as a addendum, that would probably work.
So.
Is there, is there, I don't have it pulled up on my mind, but is there?
It's section two point two.
Can we just approve that?
Yes.
Section, well, section two point two of the jailer sheriff, I think, I mean, I, I think there's still some.
Yeah, section, section two point two, it goes from page. Page nine to page twelve.
As far as, I don't know that we can approve that entire section, but we've approved.
Yeah, I think it.
We'll approve the sheriff's division.
That sheriff portion.
Clarify. Right.
So if I get a copy of that, we'll just draw two lines and approve that section, and I'll sign it.
It's right here.
Right. So it can go in the minutes? Do you have it written there?
Section two point two of the jailer sheriff section, correct?
Two point two, yeah.
Is that what you're thinking? I'm looking at like this little section.
Yeah, right. That's all we're approving.
I just wanna make sure we're on the same.
Yeah.
Because I still think there's a lot of other discussion.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's probably other things to discuss in there. I don't know if we're quite ready for all that, but I see if we gotta have that in the handbook for payroll, that makes sense easily.
So what we're doing today is approving the sheriff's section two point two of the handbook.
I'd make a motion for that jailers and sheriff section to be added.
Section two point two, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Both, motion carried unanimous.
In regards to the handbook, I was asked by an employee, why are the, for bereavement leave? Not really what we just voted on, but for bereavement leave, is it all the same between road department and courthouse employees now with the new changes in the handbook? Or is it all kind of a universal policy or?
I couldn't need to reply on, because if that's the, the moving target on this is constant, I mean, I can't hardly keep up with it.
I think right now they have three days, and, and the courthouse is five, correct or no?
Depending on the relationship. Current labor agreement for the road department, and I guess, I wouldn't ask this question, I'm not part of the discussion, is it okay if I speak?
Yeah, and it's always been different, so I don't know.
Well, we removed those leaves, those paid leaves of absence. We removed them from the secondary road and labor agreement for that purpose. And now are relying on the handbook for those types of things.
Okay.
And that note went out to the road department in the July newsletter, so the road department should be aware of that.
Just asking for clarity, yes, yeah.
And the road department, if they had, we put in the newsletter, if they had questions, they were supposed to call on our office. Lisa and I would talk them through that.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm, to be well versed with everybody's little, I mean, we're trying to kind of streamline this, but it's not easy.
There's, there's a lot of pieces in it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I guess I encourage you to look at it. Like you can see the comments that we've done, you can see the changes that we've done. I by no means think it's perfect, but we've gotta keep moving on it, otherwise it's just wasting our time, quite frankly.
Yeah, I think we.
Any other questions for Doug?
I know, I'm waiting for Derek, he was looking at some IT policies. Again, I guess we'll see what extent that is. I think there was some mention of digital content, which will add that. A lot of it was just kind of some grammar and some policy and trying to get everybody similar, like with the comp time, things like that.
Similar, not. Not identical.
If you guys can figure that out, then more power to you, but I, we run into things all the time. I mean, I would like to say that there's.
Yep. Answer your questions, Carter?
Yep.
Anything else for Doug? Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it, even though it's a, it's a never ending job.
Well, it's something that probably shouldn't ever be done, but we keep on looking at it, but, yeah, to get all the moving parts is interesting.
Thanks, Summer.
Thanks. Maybe for, for the sake of going through the rest of the handbook and everything and getting things updated, maybe we could take it a section or two at a time. I mean, it's a thirty-six page document, we could do it all at once, but it'd probably be easier if we focus on certain areas and update it as we go.
Well, the department heads and Donna are going through it, so it just comes to us to approve what they wanna change, so I don't know if we wanna sit down and be part of the handbook.
Well, I mean, we, we set the policy, so we should probably review it fairly detailed to some degree.
Well, they're not coming with finished product yet, so until they do that, we're probably not in a place to review it.
I think that's what they're working towards, though, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's, we're not, they're not there yet, so.
Well, it's probably never gonna be completely finished, but.
Never will, but let them get something that they can hand to us that we can actually look at, but. We can review with each section at a time after they're done, and that's not a problem.
That was just a thought I just had here, so.
If there is nothing else on that, we are up to discussion with the county engineer on an annual evaluation. Morning, Doug.
Good morning, everyone.
Carter?
Okay.
Your name's on it.
Yep. Historically, evaluation is done every year around last February, first week of March. And I felt being that it was missed this year, it's still good to do, and so that's why it was on the agenda.
So everybody filled it out?
Yep.
Yep. Everybody turned it in, Doug?
I've now received copies, I've received one from Jack and one from Roger.
I, I thought we were, we were supposed to turn it in today, I'm sorry.
Can't do the evaluation unless we have it done.
I guess I have, I have some stuff wrote up, I could highlight a few things.
I've never done evaluation before, I thought that was the point of evaluation, going through that together.
Normally, it's all filled out beforehand, you turn it in to the engineer, and then he comes back with a tabulation of the average.
I said, okay, fine, I didn't, I didn't know that.
That's fine.
So you wanna start me, or?
I'm pretty.
Okay.
Whatever order you have it.
Do you guys wanna start since you guys turned yours in, or?
Well, I've put an agenda for next week to review the tabulations that we've put in.
Well, it's on the agenda.
I think.
They're gonna go through it, I mean, I, I gave them a. Right, no, I, I don't, I mean, I have nothing against a question line, it's a great job, I have reason to not reapply.
Did you have something prepared, Carter, or?
I guess the ones that. Well, I filled out.
Did you?
If anybody's having an issue with him, I guess everyone's a need to bring it up.
Yep. And I'll open the floor up for Carter, go ahead.
You had no comments on?
I, no, no, I think Doug's doing a great job. I always to replace him or not reappoint.
This is an evaluation, not really a tiger fire.
Well, but it's all part of it.
Oh, exactly. I guess just go through the sections.
I'll agree with you on that, okay.
For number one, for administration of secondary road department. And I selected marginal management skills. It's a relationship between the engineer and the road department employees. Cause rather for morale is very low, and employees didn't appear to represent it.
Pardon me?
I, I can read that again.
Employees are?
Employees do not feel heard or represented.
Heard or represented, what is?
Their relation, their relationship, their relationship with you is, is not ideal, and that's just what I'm, that's all I'm saying. Relate typically management and the employees is. Less than ideal. As far as, uh.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And where are you getting that information from?
Well, you can, I, I visit with the employees.
Okay, do you ever tell them that my door is open and they should, if they have issues, they should come in and visit with me?
And they know that, but they have a difficulty with that, I mean, you could talk, talk to, talk to any of the road employees, any, any of the employees.
It, it's difficult, it's difficult to, for me to be criticized for not acting on an employee's wish when an employee doesn't come to me and discuss that. So I hope you understand that.
I, I guess, I, I'll, I'll jump in here, cause it's the same.
Come, come out, but just let Carter finish first, he's just interrupting continually, everybody, it gets old. Let Carter finish, he has the floor.
Thank you, that's fine.
Yeah, uh, the, I, well, they have to be comfortable coming to you as well, I mean, that's, that's part of it.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm just being honest.
Well, again, my door, my door is always open, in defense of me.
Yep.
My door is always open and I do have employees that come in and visit with me.
Yep. I, I know.
And, uh, so, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the specifics and I'd be, I'd be more than happy if Carter, if you'd wanna come down and talk with me about certain employees, certain issues. I'd be more than happy to go to visit about that, there's always two sides to a story and I encourage.
It's time to move on the story though.
Well, I, any story.
Yeah.
I encourage you to get all the stories. Well, I think it's appropriate that a supervisor would go to that employee and go, come into your office with them. This, this is not the way it works. I mean, even in our handbook, we have. You don't go talk to employees and. Ways to resolve conflict. We need to take that, take that employee.
Exactly, let, let Carter finish his evaluation and then, then we'll go.
If an employee is not, is, does not feel that they're being heard or represented, that is why I'm hearing from them, that's all I'm trying to say for that.
Keep going, Carter.
Okay, it's number two. Um, I got engine, engineering duties, road and bridge plans, and then, uh, number five, supervision and construction of. Supervision of construction and maintenance of secondary projects kinda go together. Um, projects are complete with some problems, some delays, but delays in projects are not always able to be helped, it's not your fault. Um, but it is the job of the engineer to ensure quality work in a timely manner. And then, time is everything, of course, but, um. As far as, you, one question I do have is why do we, when we're steel coating roads, why does that happen so late in the year compared to earlier? You know, in the year, I mean, it should be done now, really, and it just gets done so late and then the weather, well, preseason. Uh, it doesn't turn out a good finished product, you know, I guess, Levert's section road is an example of that. Um, I, I'm just, I'm just curious, why is that usually done so late in the year, I've, you know, in the past year, I've noticed that. Um, I'm not blaming you for all that, I know companies are difficult to work with sometimes too, but I, I'm just asking that.
Well, when we let projects, no matter what we do, we have a time limit on that. Now, we can certainly tell them they can only work two weeks in July. However, the prices will be a lot higher because we are limiting their work schedules. So we do have a time, uh.
Sure.
That, that we want that work done. And whoever the con, whoever the little bid is, we are working with them, so.
I guess.
And, and again, we can, yeah, that's a subject all over the state by law.
Yep.
And you can talk to the Iowa DOT contracts, they, they put time limits on projects as well. And the, the longer, the wider work period that you have, the better price you're gonna get, cause you're gonna be able to have multiple contractors to get a project. If you narrow it down to, it, three weeks in one month, it'd be very difficult to have a competitive bidding process.
Well, I just, I mean, I, I feel it maybe it'd be worth spending a little extra money and having that, rather than having to redo it more often or the following year. You know, I mean, I guess there's examples of that around, even my district, but, you know, just, things have to be redone because it's done so late in the year and the weather been cooperating. And, uh, your weather's hard to predict, but at the same time, you do, we all know that when.
I don't know of any work, seal coat work that had to be redone, we've had to go out or some turning radiuses.
Well, it didn't, didn't turn out, it didn't turn out with as good a quality finished product, because it's done so late in years, that's all I'm getting at. But, um, then as far as, uh, engineering duties, number three, road maintenance, uh, road maintenance is being completed, I think we have a lot of great employees in the road department who do that job. Um, and then annual report, budget and program, I, I put well prepared, I, I feel this is your greatest strength. Um, as you're very detailed and organized and putting together charts and spreadsheets and, um, for different presentations and other things. Um, working, number six, that we already touched on five, number six, working relationship with the board of supervisors. Uh, I put the average informs board of projects. I do appreciate greater effort to inform the board of expect, of, of the board of expected out of the ordinary expenditures as the year progresses so far. Um, however, the working relationship between the engineer and the board, I will say is tense and unhealthy. And as between engineer and the board as a whole. Um, I, I didn't really appreciate, um, the avoidance and hiding, or I don't know if hiding is the right word, but avoiding the, um, discussing evaluation and contract, or we're just here, um, just for the sake of personal employment and gain, for going the next several years. So I, I, I will say that, but, um. Number seven, uh, public relations within the community and state, and I did put, um, I did put interactions not positive or helpful, but the public has been very disgruntled with me over the engineer's office, and this relationship between the engineer and public was one of the more primary and common concerns. As I was out, door knocking last fall, I mean, following the big things, you got windmills and pipeline and all that stuff, but, but for. One of the primary concerns was doing something about the engineer's office or the engineer and the contract, and I, and so that. I, I still get comments today that people having not good experiences and, um, and within.
With me? When the public deals with me?
Correct. I, I.
I'd like to hear, I guess, some of those specifics, Carter, sometime if you would come down, cause I. I don't know, when I work with the public, I think that when everything is, when we leave, we both have an understanding. So it doesn't mean that they get everything that they want, but I try to communicate with them, so I, I would really like to hear some specifics on that.
Um, an overall evaluation, I put, um, effective and competent, um, and the weaker than average based on the relationship between the engineer and our secondary road employees and concerns with public. I, and that, that's my evaluation.
Josh? Are you prepared?
Yeah. Um, so for the first section, um, administration of the secondary roads department. I just, for lack of not having, you know, a good section, uh, selection, I just, but deficient, um, appears the discussion with some employees, um, that is not open and free from retaliation. Uh, it's been stated that employees are not allowed to discuss issues with board of supervisors, um, but that's been a conversation that's been had before. Um, that, um, anytime an employee speaks up, uh, it seems as if there is some sort of retaliation. And I don't know, um, how accurate this is, but.
Josh, you wanna stop a minute, we have the front of us, yes, requested to go into closed session by chapter twenty one point five point one. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Pla? Do I have a second to go into closed session? I'll second it. Do a roll call vote, please.
Pla?
Yes.
Nat?
No.
Wachter?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
We will go into closed session.
Right.
May I go get some documents, please?
Yes, please, go ahead. We're not, we're not in closed session yet.
No, you need to.